Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the first session of council with the newly elected council of the town of St. Andrews. At this point, we will carry forward the proceedings till we hand the meeting over to our new mayor. But to begin, last week, we were made aware of the remains found at the former site of the former Kamloops Residential School where 215 young souls were not given the opportunity to grow up, have their own families, be part of a community, and contribute to future generations. For the rest of Canada, we are only beginning to understand these injustices and the generational pain it has brought to our Aboriginal communities. It is up to each of us to become allies with our First Nation partners and to become more knowledgeable concerning the pain inflicted on them. Let us challenge ourselves to become more aware of the darker history of our nation, but to move forward for a more positive future. Before we begin our proceedings, let us observe a moment of silence for the 215 victims of Kamloops, followed by "O Canada." But let us sing "O Canada." I'm sure most of us know the words. (Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love to all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see the rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Good evening to the elected mayor and council for the town of St. Andrews. Member of Parliament, John Williamson; member of the Legislative Assembly, Cathy Bockus; members of the RCMP, staff, and guests. It was with great pleasure to welcome you to the 2021 swearing-in ceremony for the individuals elected at the recently-held quadrennial municipal elections. Before you are a collection of six men and a woman who will learn to become a team, to speak as one, in order to represent their citizens, who will strive to serve St. Andrews honorably, justly, reliably, thoughtfully, and with the eye of the overall betterment of the community. As Valerie Jarrett, a senior advisor to President Obama, said, "When you are in local government, you are on the ground and are looking into the eyes and hearts of the people you are there to serve. It teaches you to listen. It teaches you to be expansive in the people with whom you talk to, and I think that engagement gives you political judgment." When you come into council, you must put away your preconceived notions and be open to the opinions of those whom you serve, staff, subject experts, and fellow councillors. As quoted from the Book of Proverbs, "If one gives an answer before he hears, it is his folly and shame." You've been given a great privilege to serve on council. Please wear that distinction with pride and an understanding of the importance that role brings. As your staff, we pledge to work for you by carrying out the directions as provided through policies, bylaws, and instruction to your chief administrative officer and clerk. We will support your decisions and respect the authority your elected position bestows upon you, and strive to always speak positively about you as a body and as individual elected For the community, please be mindful of the burden the local government officials carry. They are trying to weigh the best outcome for the community against the expectations of their circle of influence and their own judgment. It is a role that is simultaneously rewarding and a burden, tiring and invigorating, tedious and enthralling. It may be the beginning of many years of service for some of these individuals, such as the mayor-elect and councillors Akaji and Goomishaw, who are now serving multiple terms. On behalf of my team and some who are here, including Clerk Paul Nauper, we have the operations manager in the back, Terry Acton, Fire Chief Terrio, water technician Steve Ruddick, and Public Works Supervisor Nate McMullin. We look forward to working with you and for you, and offer our heartfelt congratulations on your successful election. And now, to bring tidings on behalf of the Government of Canada, I'll ask our member, John Williamson, to come forward.
Well, good evening. I think tonight's starting to feel like summer, so we can all be pleased about that. But for those of you who are either returning to the municipal government or just being elected to it for the first time, let me offer my congratulations. You're about to discover that on days like this, you'll be in committee, you'll be working hard for the constituents of St. Andrews here. In fact, I'm heading from this podium back into Parliament for three hours of committee tonight on a beautiful June evening. But that's what public service is largely about. So much of what we do happens behind the scenes, and that's the important work that we all, I think, do collectively to ensure a better future for our citizens here in New Brunswick and, of course, right across the country. And I just want to reiterate, over the years, I've had a good working relationship with the 14 municipalities in New Brunswick southwest, of which St. Andrews is both an important municipality and the one where I live as well. And I look forward to that continuing. We can look around this municipality and see any number of projects where there was collaboration between the federal, provincial, and local government. I think of the St. Andrews Market Wharf, for example, the Huntsman Centre, the Biological Centre, and we can see these projects which have happened because different levels of government get together and work going forward. And I just want to say, the remarks we heard off the top about the horrific tragedy at the residential school, it's not the first time we've heard this, but I think it's come as a stark reminder to Canadians of a past which stains the Canadian legacy, and we're going to have to do more to work with Indigenous First Nation communities right across this country to do better. One of the benefits of one of the few silver linings of COVID is the ability to both be in Parliament and be at home, hence I'm able to be here tonight. But today, Parliament had a vote which passed unanimously urging the federal government to do more on this, to work with First Nations, to resolve outstanding issues in court cases, so tomorrow we can do better and show we are better people than at times our past demonstrated. So I appreciate you raising that. I think the moment of silence this evening was an important one, but as Canadians, we have more to do. So on that note, we'll continue to roll up our sleeves, get to work, and again, I'm here to help going forward to the team that supports council, council and the mayor-elect Henderson, congratulations as well, and I look forward to working with you closely. Thank you very much, everyone.
And on behalf of the premier, our local MLA, Cathy Bockus, if she'd like to come forward.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to witness the swearing-in of this new council for St. Andrews. I want to thank each and every one of them for putting their names forward and offering to give back to their community. I'm so pleased to have worked with the previous council on some projects and would like to extend that support to the new council. Working together, we can create great things. Please keep me informed on all your projects and your concerns, rather. I hope you find your time on council rewarding. I know I have found my time rewarding. Good luck to you all. Thank you.[628.32][628.32](Applause)
At this point in time, I'd like to pass the meeting over to the town clerk and senior administrator, Paul Nauper.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, public, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to start with a letter and a nice friendly welcoming from our Thorpe-St. Andrews Twin Community, from councillor Ian Mackey, who is their community goodwill ambassador. We would like to thank all the retiring mayor and council for their dedication and hard work over the past five years: Mayor Doug Nash, councillor Zee Dee Bishop, Guy Gru, and councillor Andrew Harrison. Congratulations to the new council and incumbents coming in: Mayor-elect Brad Henderson and councillor-elect Kate Akaji, Mark Blanchard, Kurt Goomishaw, Lee Heenan, Jamie Hurdle, and Steve Neil. We wish you all the very best success in your municipal term ahead, and we look forward to foregoing and our ties even closer between our two communities. Warmest regards from your friends in Thorpe-St. Andrews, England. And good evening and welcome. Thank you all again for attendance in the swearing-in ceremony for the town of St. Andrews for the council for 2021 to 2025. My name is Paul Nauper, and I am the Clerk, Senior Administrator for the town of St. Andrews. It is an honour and a privilege to be a part of the oath or affirmation of office ceremony for the incumbent mayor and council. As such, I would also like to acknowledge our previous council: Mayor Nash, councillors Bishop, Gru, and Harrison. I want to thank you for your leadership, your commitment, your tireless efforts for all the meetings we made you sit through, challenges faced, and your perseverance through all different types of aspects and issues coming and representing St. Andrews. You set the tone. This council has helped to create the next framework for the next council, with 10-year plans, municipal plan, zoning bylaws, secondary plans, navigating projects like the New Market Wharf, the legacy project of the Wellness Centre, and the upcoming trail projects. Additionally, you took an extra year because of the world pandemic, but you kept motivated, you kept informed, and you kept moving this community forward. Your tireless efforts will not be forgotten. I would like to now close that chapter of that council for 2016 to 2021, and we start the new with a new history book, new mayor, and new council for St. Andrews 2021 to 2025. Little to our new mayor and council, this is your opportunity. The community has selected you to represent the town in the coming years. This is your chance to listen, lead, and inspire our citizens and the greater community and those who visit. Show them how we can build on our values, culture, and history while moving us in a progressive direction that will benefit us all. I'm going to leave you with a quote from Mattie Stapanic. "Unity is strength. Where there is teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." I would like to now ask incumbent mayor Brad Henderson to take the stage.[842.43][842.43](Applause) Mayor Henderson, please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You have the speech in front of you if you choose to read it.
I, Brad Henderson of St. Andrews, swear that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of mayor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which office I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed on me by law. So help me God.
So sworn before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021. I will now ask the incumbent mayor to sign his papers. And could I ask Hunter Henderson to please come up to the stage? Hunter, this is a great privilege. I'll keep this all straight for you. If you would like to, please put this on our new mayor.[942.00][942.00](Applause) I would like to now ask councillor-elect Kate Akaji to come to the podium, please. Councillor actually put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and the speech is in front of you.
Thank you. You can take this off, right? Thank you. I, Catherine Kate Akaji of St. Andrews, swear that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor of the local government of St. Andrews, to which office I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed upon me by law. So help me God.
So sworn before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021.
Thank you very much.[1060.13][1060.13](Applause)
I would now like to ask councillor-elect Mark Blanchard to come to the stage.
Please raise your right hand and read the speech in front. I, Mark Blanchard, of St. Andrews, solemnly affirm that I, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge the duties, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed on me by law.
This is solemnly affirmed before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021. I'd now like to ask councillor-elect Kurt Goomishaw to the stage, please. So please raise your right hand and read the speech.
Thank you. I, Kurt Adam Goomishaw of St. Andrews, solemnly affirm that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which office I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed on me by law.
So solemnly affirmed before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021.[1197.61][1197.61](Applause) Congratulations, councillor Goomishaw. May I ask councillor-elect Lee Heenan to come to the stage, please?
I, Lee Heenan of St. Andrews, swear that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as they may be imposed on me by the law. So help me God.
So sworn before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021.[1261.74][1261.74](Applause) Congratulations, councillor Heenan. I would now like to ask councillor-elect Jamie Hurdle to the stage.
I, James Morgan Hurdle of St. Andrews, swear that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which office I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed on me by law. So help me God.
So sworn before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021.[1335.74][1335.74](Applause) Congratulations, councillor Hurdle. And finally, I would like to ask councillor-elect Steve Neil to the stage.
I, Stephen Neil of St. Andrews, swear that I am, to the best of my knowledge and belief, qualified for the office of councillor for the local government of St. Andrews, to which office I have been elected, and that I accept the office for which I am elected, and will diligently, faithfully, and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties of the office as may be imposed on me by law. So help me God.
So sworn before me at St. Andrews in the County of Charlotte and the province of New Brunswick on June 7th, 2021.[1411.48][1411.48](Applause) Congratulations, councillor Neil. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to your new Town of St. Andrews Council for 2021 to 2025.[1434.51][1434.51](Applause) And at this time, it is with my great pleasure to be able to hand off this meeting to our
MP Williamson, MLA Bockus, council members, friends, and family. First of all, in this heat, thank you all for attending. Naturally, if you think of the election, it was delayed. If you think of the election results, it was delayed, and of course, our swearing-in was delayed. So the fact that you all came today means a lot to all of us. I think if there was a lesson from this past election, it was that St. Andrews won it choice, and when you look at how many candidates that we had come and offered to serve our community, it was the most we've had in years. And it wasn't just that St. Andrews had choice, St. Andrews had a lot of good choices, and I know I'm going to be biased over the next four years about the six individuals to the right of me, but I have never heard so much energy and so much enthusiasm about hope for a council as I have for the six individuals beside me. A lot of people are looking forward to seeing together what the seven of us can accomplish with the support of the community. The other thing is, is this council really represents a change in municipal politics in my mind, is traditionally, we know how important federal and provincial elections are, but to have the voter turnout we had, it was the greatest turnout we've had in over 25 years. So if anything throughout the pandemic taught us, as we streamed our meetings online, is that what local government does really does matter, and more and more people have been engaged than they have been in years, and it was very evident in the voter turnout. So on behalf of all of us, to the residents of St. Andrews, thank you for entrusting us to continue to make this community, in my mind, the greatest place to live in Canada. The other thing that I want to acknowledge today is council is a large commitment. It's a huge commitment if you're really, you know, in it for the right reasons and in it to make a difference, and although this might be the journey for seven of us before you, the reality is, is in front of us all, we have friends and we have family, and it's a major commitment for our families for all to offer. I can speak from my own experience, there was a lot of nights over the last five years that my wife tucked my kids in alone, and the fact that all of our families support us to do this for our community, we are so thankful, so thankful for your support, so all of us would like to acknowledge you as well.[1615.74][1615.74](Applause) With the delays in the election, we really did have to hit the ground running, and I do think we were one of the first municipal governments to already have our orientation. And the reason that we are able to already have a full-day orientation is, again, I'm going to be biased, but we have, in the town of St. Andrews, and many of them are here with us today, we have the best staff that you could absolutely imagine. I don't know how many times, when I was on the previous council, people congratulated me, but the reality is, is it was the hard work of our staff that makes this happen, and I feel very positive that the community has a bright future, not only for who you elected, but who serves us day in and day out with the operation. So thank you to all the staff for being here today to support us as well.[1664.21][1664.21](Applause) So in true council fashion, we're getting sworn in at 6:00 PM, and we have our first council meeting at 7:00 PM. So I'm going to keep this short, as I did promise, shorter meetings, but I think it's important to mark some of the things that we have to accomplish ahead. There is a number of initiatives, that MP Williamson actually highlighted a few, that this council is going to have to continue. The foundation has been put for the Market Square and Market Wharf refurbishments, there is partnership from other levels of government to increase the amount of trails that we have in this community, there is bylaws that are stuck in second reading. This council is not going to get a chance to get orientated, we are going to have to learn quickly and give the community the decisions that they have been looking for. And then on top of what we're continuing, we also have the priorities of our own, and I'm not going to sit up here before you and tell you what those priorities are, because I am just one member of this team. I look forward to, with the six individuals beside of me, doing some strategic priorities for this community and making sure that each and every reason why they run is something that we at least here and as a team decide if it's something that we are going to accomplish together. I will say that almost every member of council that ran said that a priority for them is housing, and it is going to take, I'm glad they're here, all three levels of government to actually change this. It's to the point now where a lot of people are calling housing in St. Andrews a crisis. It's not something that someone's going to come in and fix for us. As a municipal government, we need to take ownership on this and work with our partners. It's, again, maybe the hardest time to make impact with the price of building. Affordable housing is a scary word right now when you think of building, but the community and people that really need it don't need excuses from us. What they need us to do is lay the framework to make a difference, and I'm looking forward with you guys and with your support, based on everything I heard, to make that one of our top priorities. In conclusion, I just wanted to say congratulations to councillor Akaji, councillor Blanchard, councillor Goomishaw. councillor Guomishaw, councillor Heenan, councillor Hurdle, and councillor Neal. I am looking forward to the next four years of the seven of us working together to continue to make St. Andrews by the sea the great community that it is. Now, believe it or not, we actually do need a motion to adjourn. Just to let everyone know, councillor Akaji is usually the quickest on the motion to adjourn. Councillor, actually, in a second, councillor Blanchard, all those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.[1774.12]